It is working at any brand.
Their best pitch in the second half. Sixteen games.
Oh, wow. Sixty-five discussions? What do you think?
He's taking a. They don't allow it because of masks.
Well, it's it's all over Target. That's why it's big. It's not making it sketchy at all. Probably doesn't make it so loud.
Yeah.
Well, that's because they own so many sub-brands.
And they have some.
Yeah. I guess. It one of the ones that sells for my.
Well, yeah, but. Please give me a break. That's what I cost.
Oh. Coming in. Yeah. It wasn't. Yeah. Okay, that's good. Yes. How many words? Meeting orders.
Call meeting orders. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meetings held August twenty-sixth and September fourth?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You have one person to address the board on a non-topic of the or agenda, non-agenda item. I'm sorry. Julia? Please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Julia Schreier, seventy-four hundred West Longbird Circle in Sioux Falls. I'm an eighth grade math teacher at George McGovern, and I'm also the chair of the Social Justice Committee for SFAA. Our students today enter our classrooms and schools with needs that go beyond an academic focus. They need more support for their social, emotional, and physical needs. Everyone in the community and our district is working to support our students and provide them the resources and opportunities necessary to fulfill those needs. The Sioux Falls Education Association is hoping that we can help push that progress one step further. We're inviting members of the school district and members of the community together for a public screening of the documentary Paper Tigers. As the documentary explains, stressed brains can't learn. That was the nugget of neuroscience that gym sport leader principal of a high school riddled with violence, drugs, and truancy took away from an educational conference in 2010. Three years later, the number of fights the high school had gone down by seventy-five percent, and the graduation rate had increased five-fold. Paper Tigers is the story of how one school made such a dramatic progress. I am here as co-chair of the Social Justice Committee for the Sioux Falls Education Association to formally invite you to our public screening of Paper Tigers on Saturday, September twenty-first at one P. M. at the downtown library. We hope that everyone who attends will come ready to have a conversation about what they can take away from the movie and what they are prepared to do to continue to support the students and children of Sioux Falls. More information can be found on the Sioux Falls Education Facebook page. I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite, and this is an important topic, so informing the public on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other people wishing to address the board this evening? I'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, on to the good news report.
Good evening. As you all know, the Sioux Falls School District values partnerships with local businesses that provide internship and job shadow experiences to our high school students. Our local healthcare systems are among the frontrunners of those who provide those experiences. One very prestigious experience is offered by the Sanford Research Center for a ten-week research internship over the summer, where this year four students worked alongside scientists who are discovering life-saving and life-changing medical breakthroughs. Washington High School's Jasmine Johnson was selected as one of those four students. She was a Promise Scholar, and Jasmine is joining us this evening to tell us a little bit about her experience at the Sanford Research Center and about her possible future. Jasmine?
So like I said, I'm Jasmine Johnson. I go to Washington. I'm a senior. So about junior year last year in November, I was told about an experience at Sanford Research, and it was a very immersive ten-week experience that I heard about, which is initially very intimidating. But I applied nonetheless, thinking I wouldn't get in just as an easy thing to do to see. And within lots of interview process and getting lots of calls and a lot, many essays, I was told that I was accepted with two other students from Gorman and one from Harrisburg. And so over the week from June third to August ninth, I worked right alongside my mentor in one of the same research labs. And so I was in the syringean lab working with kidneys, and so we worked on kidney disease and studying the cells. And I even got to choose my project. I had a paper that I put or a poster that I put together, and I even felt my work that it was important to the lab because I could see my work being put on papers or like for future publications, or I felt, I felt really important. And it was a really good experience because now I met a lot of people from USD or from the med school there and a lot of the grad students who are working at Sanford Research now. And so it definitely pushed me, and I'm now really interested in USD just because all of them showed me that like if you want to continue doing this is a very easy path that's just right close to home. And I was felt that I was very exceptional and that they wanted me to continue staying there. So even now I'm getting texts or emails from what are you doing this summer? What are you going to be doing spring semester so I can come back? So it was a really good experience. It was very challenging, and I hadn't really been pushed before, you know, in a classroom is one thing, but actually being pushed to saying you are, this is going to impact people's lives. Do something and doing it with purpose was something I just really like, hadn't really been pushed that hard to do. And so it was really immersive, and it really challenged me, and I, it was a really great experience. And the relationships I had with people, just even with working or like the other three students, it was very, I'm very glad I got to meet those people and have people to help me through the future wherever I go. So my plan right now is I just applied for USD a couple of weeks ago, but planning to go into neuroscience or USD or some sort of biology major to prep me for medical school is my plan right now. But, yeah.
Did you also apply for the joint med school?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm kind of going through all the applications right now, just to, the scholarship one and that one, and yeah.
Sounds like an amazing opportunity. So glad that, not surprised that one of our students would have gotten it, but so great for you to have gotten that opportunity. So congratulations.
Congratulations on your scholarship, and you can really hear in your voice this experiential learning was impactful and is certainly influencing how you're going to move forward in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing your experience.
Thank you.
I think sometimes those experiences are hard to find, so I hope that that this is something, obviously you've come here to tell us about it, but I hope it's something that you share with other students in your school too, so that they become aware of it. I think we offer lots of different internships, or not we, but we help to provide different internship opportunities. And when you get something to the level of what you're speaking about, I think it's great to get as many people involved in to be able to share your personal testimony will really mean a lot to people. Thank you and congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
The motion. We don't have to.
Go coyotes.
Coyotes, yeah. We had no new conflicts of interest presented, so I'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, approval of consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine A, one through three, supplemental consent agenda claims Sanford Healthcare System. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions from board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. Now, on to the reports, Assistant Lieutenant.
Okay. The first report tonight is a fun one every year, and that is the two thousand nineteen-twenty initial enrollment report. Report tonight comes to us from Ryan Knudsen, our new Director of Information and Technology Services.
All right. Good evening. I'm excited to bring to you the two thousand nineteen-twenty-two initial enrollment report. The initial enrollment report is a census of our FTE enrollment on the fourth day of classes, although enrollment does change past that towards our final enrollment date on the final Friday of September, which I believe is the twenty-seventh this year. The, taking that enrollment FTE count on the fourth day allows us to compare it historically to where we were at in previous years. Sorry to mess up the technology. So, all right. So for this year's two thousand nineteen-twenty-two initial enrollment report, for the K-five enrollment, we had an enrollment of eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, which is a net positive FTE of sixty-seven. That equals a point five eight percent increase from the previous year. Sixth through eighth grade was five thousand five hundred and eighty, which is an eighty-eight FTE increase, which represents a one point six percent increase. And ninth through twelfth of six thousand nine hundred and eighty, which represents an eighty-nine FTE increase, which is a one point two nine percent increase. So if you take a look at the total K through twelve enrollment, last year at this time was twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, and this year is twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight, for a total increase of two hundred and forty-four, which represents a one point zero two percent increase. Looking down to the pre-K early childhood start enrollment, we had an enrollment of one thousand four and the difference being a negative one hundred and fourteen FTE. And so when you combine the K through twelve plus the pre-K through twelve, you get a total of twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-two with a total difference of a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty FTE count. So if we take a look at that historically from two thousand fourteen or the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen through two thousand nineteen-twenty-twenty, you can see on the graph that we have a steady increase all the way to twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. So this, this slide demonstrates that we're on a very normal trajectory from previous years. And in fact, if you take a look at the two thousand eighteen spring prediction, we're pretty close to on track. And so if we compare this year to last year and everything else stays the same as it was last year, we should be slightly over our prediction. Do you have any questions? I would ask the board to acknowledge the report.
Thank you, Ryan. We as board members know, but it, for the public, it'd be good to explain why our count is down in pre-K even though that a junior kindergarten, for example.
Sure. So the junior kindergarten numbers are forty-seven. However, speaking with my enrollment staff, they do say that pre-K enrollment will lag a little bit, so on the fourth day, it could potentially be a little bit lower than it would be during the final enrollment. But the partial reason for this decline was a cut in federal Title I slots for three-year-olds to offset a reduction in the federal funds and pay for first-grade SIPs in all Title I schools. So that represents a large portion of that difference.
Well, I want to come, you know, the people who put together the numbers for us for prediction for our buildings and so forth, Todd Beek, I know is very key on that. Once again, you guys are right on target, which makes our job easier for budgeting and makes the building administrators and all that easier. So thank you for all your work on that. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. If you'll allow me to, three, three things that drew my attention to, to this particular report. Number one was the projections actually slightly from where we thought it would be. So that was number one. Number two is we actually went over the K-twelve threshold of twenty-four thousand students for the first time. So it is historic in terms of where we are. And the third thing I would say is this is consistent with what we thought would happen when we were talking through the bond campaign of what our enrollment would do. In fact, it's actually a little more pronounced than what we thought it would be. So I think those are three good things to think about when we look at this report.
So no more comments or questions? Do you have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Our second report from this evening is a district goals and strategies report, direct reflection of where we are within our strategic plan. Here to present that report tonight is Doug Morrison, our Director of Research, Innovation, and Accounting.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Maher and Business Manager Beek. It's my pleasure tonight to give you an update on our strategic plan and really kind of remind you of how the cycle works and, and what we'll be talking about here tonight. So if we recall, back in the fall of two thousand fifteen is when we actually started the, the whole strategic planning process. So it was four years ago, actually, about this time. And then, you know, through the community involvement and dialoguing about it, we finalized the strategic plan in February of seventeen. And then we baselined everything to the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. And then we started to get into the goals and strategies that we would use to move those indicators. And so this is really the third year of this cycle that we're on. And so what really happens is in the, and throughout the summer, we, you know, collaborate with basically all the administrators and, and staff across the district to come up with the goals and strategies that we are going to work on for this next school year. And so, and then we also sunset the ones that we have completed. And the way those are completed, it usually result in a board report to you throughout the year. So we reported out to tho, to you this summer, those achievements from the last school year. So this is really to bring you the new initiatives for this next school year. And tonight, we're, we're going to talk about purely the new ones. There are some that stay on there every year. It's what I call the blocking and tackling of what we do in the district day in and day out. So things like ensuring that freshmen achieve five credits every year. That's something we are mindful of every year. They're not really new, and they stay on there, and they're sort of just part of our, our process every year. So what I'll present to you are the new initiatives that we'll be working on and have identified for this school year. Okay. So we have the strategic plan broken down to primarily four pillars and a couple add-ons, but we divided into student outcomes, district staff, school climate and culture, community engagement, and then we also have a few that are related to fiscal accountability and systems management and facilities. So I'll start with priority area one, which is student outcomes, and we'll just go through the new initiatives for this next school year. So first up is to review and refine, refine the high school science course offerings to support the new graduation requirements that came out. Review and develop the district-delivered programming at Joe Foss and President's Academy. As you're aware, we moved away from Ombudsman this year and went to an in-district model, so we'll be taking a good look at this, that this year. Implementing SIPs, the reading intervention at the first and second grade level at eight elementary schools. Study and evaluate the struggling reader intervention programs that we have throughout the middle and high school. That's a study we'll be looking at this year. Establishing a partnership with the public library just to enhance our summer reading programs. We just think it's important that we keep our kids learning throughout the summer, so if we can partner with libraries, that might be a very powerful way to keep our kids reading throughout the summer. So we're going to look at that. Define the future of summer climb. We'll be evaluating the results from this past summer, so as they start to take their map testing and whatnot, we'll be looking at those results this summer. And then we'll take that feedback and decide what it is we want to do next far, next summer as far as summer climb. Do we want to keep it the same? Change it? And that will be resulting in a board report to you. Evaluate the NWA map tool. We're always looking at the most effective way to, to look at that. Are we looking at it in the right grades? And so we continue to get a lot of data from that, and it's been very helpful, so we just continue to look to fine-tune that. Explore programming and delivery options with, at the new middle school and a new high school. That's going to be very key. How's it going to look? And so a lot of work has to go into that as we build the schools and then get ready to, to launch those. Review the implementation of the elementary school schedule that went in this past fall. And then studying the junior K, junior kindergarten pilot at the two elementary school buildings that we're launching this fall as well. So we'll be evaluating the success of that. Studying the two-way immersion, dual immersion that we have going on at the two elementary buildings this fall. Looking at the computer science immersion across the district. So as you're all aware, we use Code to the Future, so we'll be looking at the whole computer science immersion process this next year. Explore e-portfolios as a means of documenting student progress, piloting that in the gifted education program. Reviewing standards-based approach to teaching and learning at the middle school. Evaluating the student outcomes at our elementary and our behavior programs. We've been, done a lot of work at accumulating data, and so we're just starting to evaluate that, and that will result in a, in a board report to you as well this next year. And then looking at implementing different curriculum delivery models and assessment options for physical education, family and consumer science, and personal finance and business. And then finally, a couple more under priority area one. Evaluate the K through twelve social studies and mathematics curriculum delivery models. Starting to look at the health K through twelve study and doing a minor ELA study, and then also piloting a, a management learning system at the middle school. So lots going on under the student outcome priority area. Moving to school climate and culture, priority area two. As you're aware, we received a federal grant to implement Project Aware at Whittier Middle School, so we'll be measuring the impact of that and reporting that out to you. Studying the current student assistant team model across the district. We'll also be looking, actually have already established the new bus procedures regarding student safety. So we implemented that, but we'll be looking to refine that and see how that's been going this fall. You know, evaluate the current practices in the district with regards to social, emotional well-being of our students and staff. That's a, that's a big one that we are constantly looking at, to ways to make sure that our, our students are supported in that, in that regard. Explore systems to implement page training for all our district staff and ongoing system to support and train new staff. And then this year, we'll be conducting a evacuation drill in practice with all community partners involved. So that will be a significant undertaking for us this fall, and very important. District staff. We're going to be developing a system to recruit and maintain a workforce reflective of our student population. I think that you'll know that's a specific measurable goal that we have in our, our outcomes. Create a, a comprehensive staff survey to garner feedback from our employees. So this year, we'll be pivoting or moving away from Gallup and developing our own survey with our own tools. And we think we can be delve into things much deeper in ways, areas that we, that we need to, so we're excited about that. Create a systems to assess teacher retention factors. You know, teacher retention is huge for us. We don't have to go out and find and source new teachers. The best way to keep your, is to retain the ones you have, so we're taking a critical look at that. Develop initiatives supporting and recruiting and retention of identified applicant shortage positions. So we all know there are shortages, whether it's custodial staff or EAs or whatever. We continue to look at ways to best source those shortage areas. Continue to look at additional pathways for our staff to grow professionally throughout their careers. And then lastly, develop the staffing levels and training and hiring timelines for the new high school and middle school, which will be upon us before you know it. Community engagement. Convening some teacher-focused groups for all grade levels to provide voices for each school on a variety of topics. So something that Deanna and Dr. Maher are putting those focus groups together. So excited about that initiative this year. Launching the Blackboard Teacher Communication Product. So as you're well aware, after piloting Kenbo, we moved away from that, and we're starting to, we'll be starting to use a new tool that's integrated with our current mass communication system. And then a big one is to develop the community feedback process related to the new elementary, middle, and high school attendance areas. So I think you've seen some of the timelines about, around that. You know, we are already starting to look at that process, and that will start with some, you know, probably the first part of next year, starting with the task force, the community feedback sessions. And so we're starting to identify some of those dates, and so it's, it's getting very real now. And so we've got a lot to do in the next year and making sure that we're transparent, open, collecting all that feedback with our community, much like we did with the bond referendum is going to be a key to a, to a successful rollout of that. Couple other initiatives that we're looking at that don't fall under the, maybe some of the main pillars, but they're, they're very key to the district is we're looking to process to digitize our student records. So if you think about it, we don't really digitize them until after they graduate. So at any one time, we have twenty-five thousand paper files out there throughout the school district. And so we're looking, and Ryan will be helping lead us that through. He brings some expertise from where he came from and, and helping the district to look to not only digitizing the records, but also workflow around them so we can eliminate some paper and maybe get some efficiencies out of there. So we hopefully can get a pilot up this year, but that's a, that's a, something we're very excited about working on. We'll be developing a new technology plan for twenty-one through twenty-two and talking with Ryan. I think he wants it to be a three-year plan, so it'll probably be the, the current plan. This is the last year of that, so we'll be reconvening a committee to look at the next three years as far as technology, and that ties ultimately into the budget and everything else. Develop alternatives for the district boundary changes. So the first step before we take some scenarios to the community is we have to come up with those scenarios ourselves. So we're looking at, you know, we've got some great tools internally to use, whether it's Tableau, Edulog, some things that we can use to look at different scenarios. And so Todd and I will kind of be leading the charge on that and then ultimately, you know, taking them to the task force, the community, and then ultimately to you guys. So we're, we're excited about the tools that we have to use around that process. And then finally, as you're aware, we implemented, you know, July one, we put in our new HR finance system, which was a huge undertaking. And so now we're just taking a look at it this year to see, make sure we're happy with the way everything's working and, and putting that into the feedback loop. And any changes or enhancements we need to make, we'll be looking at that this next school year. So lots going on across the district, a lot of initiatives, but, you know, we document them and we put them in a, in that living, breathing document because it holds us accountable, it has dates in there, and it also helps us to not get distracted. So everything we do relates back to the strategic plan, and so we don't get sidelined by things that others bring us, and we, you know, it's, this is what we're working on this year, and so all the board reports are tied into it, you'll see this next year, and so that's, this is the, again, the, the strategy, the goals that we're working on through this year. And then not too, in the, in the near future, we'll be bringing you the results of the goals and strategies from last year, so the state report card process is just wrapping up, so actually, I think next week, they come out. We've been tracking that, and so Dr. Boyce, and I think the next board, board meeting will be bringing to you what our state report card looks like, and then I'll be bringing to you how we're doing against all those strategic plan indicators that we have been tracking for the last three or four years, and that's the cycle, that's sort of how the cycle will go. So with that, I would ask that you acknowledge the 2019-20 priorities, goals, and strategies. Any questions? All stand by, or some of my colleagues are on standby as well, so.
One comment I would have is, as you see in our plan, it's, this is more for the public, is communication is key and making sure communities engaged in this, and that with the boundaries task force, keep your eyes open. We're looking for people to serve on that so they can reach out to I P C or to board members, Dr. Maher, and put your name in the hat. Doesn't mean you'll be out of an excellent, at some point, hopefully have a broad, diverse group of people and so forth, but it's something you can participate in, a way to get involved and keep educated about it, even if you're not on the task force, the meetings are open to the public.
Yeah, we'll, we'll use a process similar to the boundaries. We'll have a website. We have a communication tool that we're, that Deanna and I are looking at, so, that will allow people to essentially ask their questions. We have to be very transparent with, in any scenario, parents will have to find, be able to find out where, under each scenario, their kid might be attending, and so you're, you're right, we're going to have to be as good or, or not better than we were with the bond referendum process, so we'll, we'll be developing a whole essentially add-on to our website that accommodates all that, so lots to do in the next year.
Yeah, priorities and the goals and the strategies really talk about what's going on inside our schools, and if you look at all of those activities and how they touch students at every age level, at every teachers and staff and the community, and then you look at the fact that we're building new schools and we're adding on to some and we're renovating, I just think next year, really the next two years are going to be very, very busy inside our schools with our instruction, but then outside of our schools with construction as well, so it's so important to have all this documented in one place so that people know where to reference, and even the public can go and look and say, what's going on, you know, in my grade level of student or with my, the teachers that are in my school or whatever, so would encourage the public to engage in that as well and know that if they have questions or they want to know information, there's so much out there, if they just go and look.
Yep.
And then ask questions, and we would love to ask, answer those questions, because that's how we keep people informed, and we really are doing so many great things, and so trying to make sure that people understand the work that's, that's going on in their buildings is important as well, so thank you for, you know, it's not just you, it's all the people around the room that are working on this too, so a lot of great things going on.
Yeah, like, like I said, lots to do this year, so.
I was going to say, we're not going to be resting on your laurels, for sure.
See no more comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve the report? So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to policy, Kate or Carly, who are you?
I'll do it. I'm going to use your paper, it has my computer show.
Okay.
Okay, so we, just as a reminder, we meet throughout the school year to review policies in a cyclical manner, and so this month, we've got a group of policies that we are reviewing, and based on the changes that were being recommended, they really all fall into that review revise, because none of the changes are major, and so I'll just list them off, and you can, can do them all as a group, because they're all review revised, so the policy D A fiscal management goals, priorities, objectives, no changes. Policy D B annual budget, no changes. Policy D B C budget planning, no changes. Policy D B J budget transfers, update to current practice. D C A taxing and borrowing, managing capital reserves, requires bids for all short-term loans exceeding 10 million regard, rather than the 5 million originally. Policy D E C funds from federal tax sources, no changes, and policy D F A investing revenues and investments, no changes as well. So with that, if there are any questions, we can sure answer them, otherwise I would make a motion to approve the review revision of the policies that were stated.
Second, that. Any questions or discussion? Sing them. Move on to the question. All those in favor of review and revision of the school district policies, A through G, number 11, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourned. That was taking care of us.
Thank you very much.
Out of town. Do you know where?
Thank you so much.
Can you just find it on like iTunes or?
You can, yes.
Thank you. What's the significance? Todd?